John F. Flores.
Here.
Kathryn E. Leonard.
Here.
Justin S. McLaughlin.
Here.
Jean Marina Palatano.
Here.
Naomi Neville.
She's here.
Here.
Madam Chair, there's a quorum present.
I ask you to turn off your cell phone and if you can stand this quietly. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proclamation honoring 2015 Employee of the Year, Laura J. Kenny.
Yes, I'd like to ask Laura J. Kenny to come up, please. You're coming, aren't you? Oh, really? Okay. Every year, we award one of the employees a proclamation for being Employee of the Year, and I am going to read it, and it's because of an outstanding performance from an individual employee. Whereas in 2004, '05, the city administration instituted a new employee recognition, and whereas the award recognizes one of City of Newport's employees for his or her performance during the past year as a model of initiative, work ethic, professionalism, and dedication to duty. Whereas numerous candidates were nominated for this award by their peers as representing the essence of professional public service and providing a very competitive process of review and selection. And whereas many of our employees who have merit recognition for their commendable work, one candidate was chosen based on performance during the past year to symbolize the highest levels of diligence, ethics, and professionalism. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeanina Palatano, Mayor of the City of Newport, do hereby proclaim Laura J. Kenny as the 2015 City of Newport Employee of the Year, and call upon all the citizens in Newport to join with me to express some thanks and appreciation for all she's contributed to the city, express and extend our sincerest death wishes. I will just mention Laura had come from the Bonds Department this year. In the past, we've had certain employees, or employees from all different departments, including Public Works, the Bonds Department. So I think it's really a nice time of the year and a fitting tribute to how hard certain employees, not only certain employees, but all our employees' work, and congratulations. Oh, um, Laura, has anybody signed up for this decision?
No, they have not. Council liaison updates?
The public hearing, we are going to have the public hearing, however, what I will note is that administration has been working on a number of changes in a number of different areas. So we will not be voting for this tonight, we will vote to continue it. However, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the city's capital improvement program, please feel free to come up now. There's a motion in second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor. Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
The consent calendar?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve consent calendar in its entirety with exception of item B478.
There's a motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Application for a special event, Lynn Tongit, Newport this week, DBA A Night to Remember.
Madam Chair, make a motion to amend the application, H3, to add raffles.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve amendment?
Aye.
There's a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Application for a special event, Rhode Island Bridge and Turnpike Authority, DBA Forbridge's Ride.
Um, yes, Councilor Neville will be recusing herself on 7 and 8. There's not really a question of 7, but perhaps number 8, and it could be held bridge run, 7:15 to 10:00, and almost three hours, and I'm just wondering, you know, does that compete with vehicle traffic? How does that work?
Sure. Matthew Gregg, 33rd Avenue, here at the Center around Newport. We actually have a one-hour policy for all runners, off the bridge within one hour. This is for the entirety of the event, so most of them down at the Gateway Center will kind of go on continuously looking for having refreshments such as water, coffee, orange juice.
Okay, so your talk is starting to finish?
Yeah, this is the entirety of the event. The parts where it'll actually be on the roads in Newport would be over by nine o'clock for various.
So would it be like 7:15 to 9:00, or?
Yeah, the race starts in Jamestown at 7:15, so the first runner would probably make their way into Newport about 7:40.
Oh, okay.
So it's probably 7:40 till about nine o'clock.
Okay.
Nine fifteen is probably.
All right, thank you. Um, move to approve, item number seven, I already know what you're saying. There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Application for a new vidling license, Picnic LTD, DBA Picnic, 26 to 28 Bellevue Avenue.
Uh, this is a bid license for picnic located in 2628 Bellevue, Bellevue, under passage. There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Application for a new vidling license, TJPAC226LLC, DBA Cristos Pizza of Newport.
Again, it is a bid license for Cristos Pizza at 226 Bellevue Avenue, under passage.
Second, second.
There's a motion, second?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to offer amendment to the application, just to clarify, the hours of operation could be from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, which is not clear on the application.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion, second, to amend the application for clarity to 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs. On the original motion, move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, second?
Hi, my name's Tom Sardino, I just haven't catched, it's 266.
To the mic, please.
Hi, Tom Sardino.
It's 266?
It's 266.
Is that what is on the?
266. So it's 266 on the?
Oh, okay. A typo on the, uh, thank you. Oh, okay, so move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Application for a vidling license, new location, Jack L. Corey, DBA Mocha Coffee House.
Uh, yes, this is a bid license for Mocha Coffee House at 469 Fame Street, under passage.
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Appointments to boards and commissions?
Uh, I make a motion to appoint Timothy Brown and Adrian Taylor to the Tree and Open Space Commission.
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs. Make appointment of Heidi Wang to the zoning board of review, Susan T. Perkins to move up to first alternate, and Charles Allen to move up to second.
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs. Uh, reappointments, um, I make a motion to reappoint John Hirschbach to the Cliff Walk Commission.
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs. I make a motion to appoint Daniel Dias to the Historic District Commission.
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs. I make a motion to appoint Brenda Bachman and Monica Silvo Burnley to the Hospitality Commission.
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs. Uh, I make a motion to appoint, reappoint Rebecca McSweeney as Chair of the Zoning Board of Review.
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Resolution recognizing Sid Abrezy on his induction into the East Coast Surfing Hall of Fame.
Councilor Flores, and Mr. Abrezy, can you come up, please? We don't let you talk if you mean that.
Sid Abrezy is a local surfing icon. Newporters have come to know him as the godfather of Rhode Island surfing. Sid is a pioneer who helped popularize the sport of surfing in New England during the 1960s. Forty-five years ago, he played a major role in legalization of surfing, and continues to this day to be one of his chief ambassadors. His influence has spread throughout the world, unifying surfers on the East Coast, West Coast, and South Africa. Sid's resilience and determination embodies the strength and spirit of our city. So let it be resolved that the Newport City Council today recognizes this local icon and his induction into the East Coast Surfing Hall of Fame, and let it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and members of the city council, and countersigned by the city clerk, be presented to Sid Abrezy and spread upon the records of this council.
First of all, just really quick, like to thank the town council, this means everything. I've been surfing in Newport about for over 50 years, and surfing's come a long way, and through the generosity of the Newport leaders of our community, over those 50 years have been very generous with the surfing community in giving them plenty of room at First Beach, unlimited access for surfing, which allowed the sport to grow. The sport is multi-generational now, from just kids when I was going into all walks of life, and they all come to Newport now, as you can see on the regular day, just under zone, surfing all throughout Newport, and enjoying the town and the restaurants, and that's all through the generosity of Newport in allowing such an unlimited surfing area and being more than fair. A lot of towns have a small area, a limited town, Newport's been always generous to the surfing community, and over the last 50 years, it has grown, and like I said, I'm sure everyone really appreciates coming to Newport, whether they're a local or an out-of-town, and it's all behalf of all the town fathers. So, thank you on behalf of all the surfing community, and this means all the love.
But I did want to mention, when we were doing the Cliff Walk, there was some questions about the breakwater, and you and others that surf in that area were most helpful to the city and to the state engineers, and it was truly appreciated.
Thank you. I think you can see the, what the town ended up doing, besides it's cost efficient, it did the job, and it will be like after hundreds of years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There's a motion, second, to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs. Congratulations.
Resolution regarding bulky waste collection?
Yes, Councilor Kenny? Um, yes, I am not going to read the whole regulation, but I just thought I wanted to bring up a bit, that I think that we have, we've actually benefited from the city's waste management contract, and that we have actually increased our recycling rate from 23% to 30%, and which means that less trash is actually going into the landfill, saving the city money. However, I do believe, based on emails and calls that I've gotten, that we're still having problems with the bulky waste policy, and I'm not sure if the policy is a problem with the policy or the communication about the policy, but it's something that I would like administration to look at. So I'm going to read the resolve. Um, the resolve that the administration evaluate the bulky waste process, including assessment of costs and benefits of the current bulky waste sticker fee program, as well as determination of the cost of reinstitution of creating routine bulky waste collection, and therefore be further resolved that administration review and evaluate the methods of communicating the waste collection program and enforcement of existing ordinances in pursuit of improving the process to address issues associated with improper disposal of bulky waste. I, I realize that this policy has changed the system for residents. At one time, you could just put a mattress outside, you can't do that anymore, now you have to buy bulky waste stickers, you have to call waste management, and you have to wait two weeks between the first and third Thursdays of the month, so this is entirely new, and I would like us to look at this policy as well as the communication, you know, would it be better to continue charging and have once a week pickup, or some people have suggested a once a month pickup and no cost, but I think it's something that we need to look at, the financial impact of all of these things.
So you'd have to change it.
So that's where I am on this, and I appreciate your comments. Also, one other thing, the newsletter that's going out, the City of Newport newsletter, also has the procedures in it for this month for residents to see, so that's actually helping the communication as well.
Madam Chair? Yes, Councilor Leonard, I'm glad to see this come to the boardroom, because there've been so many calls for big bulky items being dumped throughout the city, and shame on those who do that, but I also note, noticed, or I understand, that we've had quite a bit of cost related to people dumping their items, because A, either they can't afford to buy a sticker, or they really don't feel like buying a sticker. But in either case, I was told, and maybe we could look at it in terms of a possible reopener, both parties, the city and the waste company agree, in terms of, like Councilor said, who says, maybe once a week, the cost needs to be really looked at. I didn't vote for the contract, and this is one of the reasons. I think that repercussions have commonly gone seen it, so I would like to see myself if this can be looked at, because nobody wants to look in a city with TV sets and old couches and mattresses abandoned and thrown around. I think a motion to approve, uh, I just want to say. Sorry. Um, yeah, I applaud you for bringing this forward. I think it was represented to me, and I did vote for the contract, and I still feel the contract has been beneficial to Newport. However, I would, if it was represented, there would be twice a year bulky pickup, once in the spring and once in the fall, and I cannot tell you how many times I had gone into the prior city manager's office to ask that question and reconfirm it. A weekly basis, I think, could be very costly. However, the springtime and the fall was, I believe, the same schedule that they had before. It's very difficult sometimes, particularly for some of our older residents, to get bulky things either in their car, or even down to the beach when they collect that. So I would hope that we could have a reopener and at least a consideration of, you know, once or twice a year, having bulky pickup. The other thing that I would say is that it is open down at City Yard during the day if you wanted to drop off your own, that's still available to the residents, but even that can become difficult. So I really hope that they take a good hard look at the program, but I'd like to applaud the program in that we have raised our recycling, our recycling amount, which we haven't been able to do for years, so I think that's a positive. Yes?
The resolution does not provide a prescription to what would be done, it asks the city to look at various options, and you raised the point, twice a year collection, I think at other times we've talked about once a quarter, or phasing them to times of the year when people are moving in and out. I think the fundamental problem here is that when you've got a system that is causing consternation at various points along the way, you need to look at it, see how we can improve it, and that doesn't mean we have to throw it all out, but, you know, there's something about the system, it's complex, and it's not working as well, but the bins are working great, I think the overall program's working quite well, but how we're handling the bulky waste, I think needs to be improved, and I look to the administration to bring us back some ideas, but also cost, because the bottom line is, people may think they would like to have this, but if you tell us it's too expensive, we have to be realistic about that, so I look to your recommendations.
Thank you. Any other comments? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, second, to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Action number 5491.
Madam Chair, Newport Substance Abuse Department Task Force is requesting approval of a contract for consulting services with John Maxon Consultants, an amount of $6,000 to $6,000. The contract is for the period of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2016, when we will lead through the Strategic Prevention Framework partnership for success plan, which will be settled by the Council via Resolution 2014 dash 150, an amount of $750,000, for the period of July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2018. With the approval of the company resolution?
Second.
There's a motion, second, discussion, Madam Chair? Yes, Councilor Neville. Really quick, there's a fiscal impact that should be checked off, there's no fiscal impact, the whole budget is coming out of the ring.
My form's checked off.
Because you did it before me.
Exactly.
Madam Chair, I ask for a twenty second for the Strategic Prevention Framework partnership for success plan.
Thank you. You'll leave notes. Will we regret this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Action number 5492.
Madam Chair, Department of Public Services recommends approval of a one-year agreement including two additional one-year option years for Island Elements Incorporated, of Middletown, Rhode Island, for water support, equipment rentals at Eastons Beach. This agreement will add 4,500 revenue to the Eastons Beach revenue cap for fiscal year 2017, 4,500 for fiscal year 2018, and 4,500 for fiscal year 2019, totaling $13,500 over three years. With the approval of the company resolution?
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Action number 5493.
Madam Chair, Department of Public Services recommends approval of a supplemental agreement to contract number 11-069, that would increase the annual not-to-exceed contract total for fiscal year 2015, 2016, to not-to-exceed amount of $47,517.50, and which will provide additional funding for capital and decorative street lighting efforts. The contract to provide decorative streetlight maintenance and repair services is with the original sold bidder, Frank Antonio Electric Company Incorporated, of Middletown, Rhode Island. The current budget and approval of the company resolution?
There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Action number 5494.
Madam Chair, Department of Public Services recommends the purchase of furnishings associated with the city clerk office renovation, furniture, furnishings, and installation to the lowest, most responsible bidder, Office Director of Rhode Island, based on submitted proposal for the associated work. The cost of this will, will amount to the total amount of $33,092. The total price includes $30,092 for the purchase of the furnishings, and $3,000 in project contingencies. There's no fiscal impact and approval of the company resolution?
There's a motion, second, discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilor?
I had a question about the existing furniture. My memory is that some of it was sort of older, a little?
Pretty beat up.
Older, yeah, but is there some sort of plan to either donate that furniture, or, I just don't want to see it go into the bulky waste?
Yeah, yeah, well, we do have a process of surplus properties, we'll canvass the rest of the city to see whether they can use some of it.
All right, I guess just so, I would just ask that before it gets thrown out?
Right.
And if nobody wants it from the city, it could somehow then be given away, you know, we have?
Well, yeah, as I said, there's a process to surplus the property, and quite frankly, I don't want to burst anyone's bubble, but we have plenty of stuff like that, and as you're aware, we have probably a schoolhouse full of stuff, you know, chairs and the like, and I could go on for a while about other buildings we had, and no one would claim it, but we can look at what Laura has and make some accommodations if no one wants it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Action number 5495.
Madam Chair, Department of Utilities, Water Division staff, recommends the contract for Secana Pump Station building modification of the project, number 16-015, to our Zolo Corporation, still to ask, be made in accordance with Change of Order Number 1, for the amount of $16,090.58. The new contract amount will be $92,590.58. Funding for this project will be provided through the Water Division Control Capital Improvement Program. The amount is currently budgeted, Madam Chair, and we approve of the company resolution?
Second. There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Action number 5496.
Madam Chair, Department of Utilities recommends the award of contract for engineering and design services associated with water distribution system improvements to James, Jane Jeremiah and Associates of Providence, Rhode Island, for the not-to-exceed fee of $63,290. Funding for this project will be provided through the Water Division Control Capital Improvement Program. The current budget and approval of the company resolution?
Second. There's a motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Madam Chair, make a motion to the highest council, who believes more like the future?
There's a motion, second, to the highest council, and get his license permit here?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye, ahs, ahs.
Madam Chair, a motion to approve, second? Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety?
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve the consent calendar in its entirety. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it?
Madam Chair, make a motion, please.